Madam Secretary, would you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reba Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject now on the printed agenda? We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and please state your name and address for the record. We do have one individual signed up, Mr. Enright, to lead us off this evening. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, feel free to come forward at this time. Come on forward at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright, and I live at Huntwood Drive in Gambler's. I'm here tonight, I gave you a handout, you should have a one-page sheet. I'm here tonight concerning Bill 2915.
I thought it was about the budget, so I didn't give it to you.
Oh, that's okay. Well, Beth has one, she'll give it to you later. But it is about 2915, the budget, which is not on the agenda tonight. Anyway, just a suggestion to make a line correction so that the abbreviation put forth, the so-called abbreviation put forth in Exhibit B is, comports when it expands to the actual title that is correctly stated in Section 41, so that everything is copasthetic and that nobody's confused about which fund the gambling money's coming from as it goes to its intended destinations. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Enright. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, move forward with the agenda. Is there any item, any councilman? I'm sorry, before we get to that, I do have someone else who wants to speak, and give him a few minutes. Sheriff Bateman.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the council, I really appreciate you allowing me this opportunity to address the council on a special matter tonight. Our office is due to come before this council on May the 12th to testify about our budget. And unfortunately, for the first time in eight years, I will not be here. I'm getting married this Saturday to this beautiful lady behind me.
Yeah, sure.
And I will be on my honeymoon, and it's unlike a doctor's appointment, which you could change, I'm not changing this one. So I just want to just address a couple things, and not to be redone, because Colonel Tabor will be here on May the 12th. But I wanted to first give you a real quick overview of what my agency did during the Baltimore, the unrest in Baltimore City. What we did, in great communication with Chief Altamore, we provided deputies every single day, both 3:00 to 11:00 and day work, to supplement their personnel in Northern, Eastern, Western, and Southern, all four districts. And they did so with bells on, and they did so in a great job. And my brothers and sisters in blue, where I came from, and my great relationship with Chief Altamore made this be seamless. So it was, again, the partnership just got even stronger. If it could get any stronger, it did. So it was great having my staff patrolling all four districts and answering 911 calls for service. So now let's talk about budget. During this last budget presentation to the county executive, my main focus was to try to get a prisoner transport unit for out-of-county pickups. Out-of-county pickups occur about 4.4 arrests a day, where we have to leave Anarundel County and travel throughout the state of Maryland, whether it be Garrett County, Wycomico, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, wherever, to pick up prisoners. This severely reduces the number of arrest warrants that we can serve every single day. I originally asked for five by former county executive. As you know, he gave me two, and I'm going to make the best use possible out of the two. I'm happy to announce that this is the first time in three county executives that my office has received net staff over and above and beyond our original staff. Last year, we got two deputies, but that just replaced the two deputies that were taken from my agency under the Leopold administration. But this time, Mr. Schu has given us two, and it's the first time in 16 years under three county executives, and I'm really happy to see that growth. So that's a great thing.
And in that, in that 16 years, how much has the population grown?
The population has grown 30,000, 60,000 more housing units. The numbers are crazy. So I'm really glad. So what I'm going to do with that is I'm putting one deputy on day work, one deputy on 3:00 to 11:00 shift, and they'll be responsible for doing out-of-the-county pickups. When they're not doing the out-of-county pickups, they'll be serving summonses and criminal summons and witness summonses, which to the tune of about 80,000 to 100,000 a year. So they will not be tied up at the commissioner's office, per se, when they're serving summons on someone, which is basically just going to the door and having them sign for it. And then if they get a call to go to Garrett County, they're free and they can get up and go. So it's, I think it's going to cut our numbers down. Last year, we had 1,553 out-of-county pickups. That's huge. That really takes away from, you know, you drive three hours to Garrett County, you pick up an individual, you arrest them, you bring them all back, three more hours, and then at least two hours with the commissioner. So you have, now you have an hour of overtime to pay for one arrest warrant. So again, as you can see, this severely reduces the number of warrants that we can serve every single day. So again, Colonel Tabor and Mary Bell from my office will be here on May the 12th, but I'm really excited to say that I'm here tonight, that I'm getting two deputies, and I'm going to make the best use of possible of them. Any questions?
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
I just want to thank you guys for your support during this last couple of weeks. It was certainly needed, and I'm grateful that our police staff was able to go up to actually reinforce and assist in Baltimore City. One of the things I would encourage you all to do, so that we don't have the sort of issues that sort of flared up in Baltimore City, is sort of focus on this whole community. I know we've been doing it over the last couple of years, but community policing and not being in there when there's an arrest that's needed, but being in there when, to make, build relationships and to understand the people and the culture that exist in those communities. I think that's the medicine we need, certainly with other things, but when it comes to the police relationship, I think that will certainly go a long way. So thank you, Sheriff, for your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all very much.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Sheriff. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 4215, Anordnance Concerning Anarundel County Consolidated Plan FY 2016 to FY 2020. Bill 4315, Anordnance Concerning Zoning Breweries and Farm Breweries. Bill 4415, Anordnance Concerning Zoning Commercial Districts Funeral Establishments.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 1915, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members on the Personnel Board for Anarundel County. Resolution 2015, Resolution Recognizing June 9, 2015, as Teal Tuesday Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, may I have a motion, sorry, may I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1615 out of order?
Let's move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1615 out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1615.
Resolution Approving the Application to the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene/Behavioral Health Administration for Grant.
Mr. Marzick, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. Resolution 1615 approves a grant from the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene/Behavioral Health in the amount of $250,000 to establish an opioid misuse prevention program within our department of health. It will include a media campaign to increase awareness, funding for an overdose fatality review team, and development of a strategic plan to prevent opioid misuse in the county. Here to answer any questions from the Department of Health is Timothy Laresca from the Department of Health.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just briefly. Have we applied for this before in the past? Just curious. First time I've seen this one.
I think it's just the first time this year.
Is it in an effort to plus up the efforts for the county? I think you just mentioned as well.
Sure.
To address the...
Yeah, it's definitely, sure. Name is Tim Laresca. Yes, this is a supplement to our prevention for the opioid problem we're having right now. So yes, it's definitely additional money from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any additional questions? Thank you both, appreciate it. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 1615. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on that bill, but if anyone would like to, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 1615 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1615.
Resolution Approving the Application to the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene/Behavioral Health Administration for Grant.
Thank you. Is there any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1615.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Perutka.
Nay.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 1615 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1415 as amended.
Anordnance Concerning Zoning State-L licensed Medical Clinics.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had several public hearings on this bill, amended it several times. I'm hopeful today we take a final vote on it, and I have nothing else to say at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, any additional comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. We continue to support Bill 1415 as amended. I have folks from different departments here to answer questions if the council has any.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 1415 as amended. I don't have anyone signed up to speak in advance. If you'd like to come forward and speak, please do so at this time.
Good evening. My name is Peter D'Souza. I'm the Executive Director of Addiction Recovery, Inc., doing business as Hope House Treatment Centers in Crownsville and Laurel. The exact same scenario of Bill Number 1415 was heard in the U.S. District Court in Baltimore County in August of 2006. I had sent the article to all of you on April 28th. Baltimore County lost the case because the bill violated the Americans with Disabilities Act. I've spoken to Nancy Dudin, the county attorney, and she has forwarded the same information to you. I had let her know that we cannot afford to waste the resources and valuable time of our county fighting the exact same case and expecting different results. In fact, in the article, it states, and I quote, "The case could serve as a precedent to any government seeking to single out those in drug treatment," end of quote. Nancy Dudin, the county attorney, agrees with me about the ramification of this article. On April 23rd, 2015, Dan Nadeff, the director of Anarundel Community Colleges Center for the Study of Local Issues, wrote an article in the Capital Gazette stating that he conducted a survey in Anarundel County. Eighty percent of the people surveyed opted for expanded treatment for addictions, and 61% said that there should be increased government funding for inpatient clinics.
Could you please summarize, Mr. D'Souza?
Yeah. I have still not been able to find a suitable place for treatment that is not within 1,000 feet from a residence. Anyway, it is moot because it discriminates against Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thank you, Mr. D'Souza.
You need to withdraw this bill as an act of kindness to people suffering from addiction and it's an epidemic in Maryland.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. So anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 1415? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 1415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2015.
Anordnance Concerning Volunteer Fire Company's Charges and Fees.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Marzick again. You brought all the big guns with you tonight, huh?
We did. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. Bill 2015 will reduce or eliminate certain permitting and construction-related fees for volunteer fire companies wanting to construct a new fire station in the county. Our goal with 2015 is to reduce the financial burden on volunteer fire companies that are constructing a new firehouse. These volunteer companies provide a service that would otherwise be the sole responsibility of the county. We do have a rather large panel here today, but from Planing, Zoning, Larry Tom, from Public Works, Chris Phipps, from Inspection and Permits, Dan Kane, Fire Chief Alan Graves, and also we have Bobby Howland, who is the chief of the Volunteer Fire Department in Woodland Beach as well, all to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm not sure if, Chief, you want to offer any quick comments before the council may open up the questions?
Counsel, Bobby Howland, Chief of Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Department, spoke in front of the council many times on our project of building a new firehouse. As you've heard before, the cost associated with a project this size is enormous, and any help from the county in the future for the construction and preparing for the construction would be a great help. As most of you know, that most of our funds to continue to run day-to-day come from donations throughout the county, with a small supplement budget from the county that goes through the fire department, but the majority does come from just donations alone. And I believe you're looking upwards of about $150,000 for the procedure to get to the point of construction, and it would be a great help on the volunteer side, speaking for a lot of volunteer companies that possibly might be looking in the future to build. It would be greatly appreciated if Bill did go through.
Thank you, Chief. Just for the benefit of the new council members, those of you returning probably remember, but we were, went through the process of adding the property that Woodland Beach has recently purchased through the master water plan and sewer plan, actually, about, I guess it was over a year ago now. And subsequent to that, MDE rejected their request to have public water, even though water was running down the middle of 214, right in front of the property, because they didn't want water service on the other side of 214, on the southbound side of it. The council sent, the previous council sent a letter to MDE requesting, actually, I think Planning and Zoning actually contacted, sorry, initially on the water side and said, you know, your rejection of this doesn't really make sense because it's a fire house, and they need public water access and can't depend on a well to fill up the trucks when they're running out for service. So the MDE came back and said, yes, we'll allow them to connect to the water as long as the water connection doesn't convey with the property to any future owners. So the only one benefiting from that would be the fire department that's currently there. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background for those of you that are new, and a reminder for those of you who are returning. So is there any, any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
I have one quick question, it's a little off-subject, and if you prefer, I wait for the budget, I certainly can do that later this week or next week. But why is it that the size of the building dictates the building permit? The size of the lot dictates the grading permit fee? You know, I guess with, you know, the capital connection charges, you've got a theory there, depending on the amount of toilets and faucets and all that. You know, how come we say, hey, if you can afford a $3 million building, then you can afford $20,000 building permit? What's the logic there?
Well, the fees for a grading permit, it's based on limited service, not necessarily the size of the lot. So the amount of dirt you're moving, slummar that you're putting in, and things like that. For a building permit, that's how our rate structure is set up, is value of work. Some jurisdictions do value of work, some do it per square foot.
It's just subjective. We just decided that if you can build a million-dollar project, we're going to charge you X amount.
That's the way the code has it set up.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Are there any other volunteer fire houses in this situation down the pipeline this will affect? This particular bill? Was it just the specific one?
Mr. Smith, if I may, Larry Tom, for the record, I'm not aware of any facilities being planned outside of Woodland Beach.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpauer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tom, I guess, certainly, I'm going to support this, and I want to support our volunteer fire companies. My only question is, you know, I see in here that in this grading permit category, there's now a number of uses that are enumerated, and now fire stations on properties owned by volunteer fire company are going to be added. Is there any, does this set a precedence where now another entity is going to come and say, oh, you gave this reduced rate to fire companies, we provide a service too, can you include us? Or are volunteer fire companies so unique that you think this is a one-time-only deal?
I'm going to defer this to Mr. Kane.
Oh, very good. Okay. He seems delighted that you have done that.
I'm going to go with unique.
I thought you were going to defer to Mr. Marzick.
You knew you were going to defer to him. You know, I think, Mr. Trumpauer, I think that as far as what I can think of at this moment, it's a pretty unique situation, I think. I know the council has a similar bill coming down before them that we can discuss at that point, but I think that the key point that we've tried to make with this is that if this volunteer group was not building this firehouse, the county would have to build this firehouse.
Right. And I'm not...
I'm not saying that there is no other situation like that, but none that I can think of.
Okay, that's helpful. I just wanted to know if the administration in general was kind of opening the door for other subsidies or whatever you want to call it. It sounds like no, that you're viewing this uniquely, and that's what I wanted to hear. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Mr. Grasso, Mr. Pruski and then Mr. Perutka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Councilman Smith, in response to your question, Odenton at some point will be building a new fire hall or at least looking at it, so I want to get that part of the record. It's not in the capital projects plan, it's early discussions, but just as far as some, another volunteer company, I'm aware of that. So thank you.
Mr. Perutka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, Mr. Tom, maybe you should be the person to address this, but to what extent, when you add somebody, or add this to what I'm going to call a special class here, there's a class, to what extent does that shift fees to others? Can you comment on that?
Well, in regard to the impact fees, which is...
Well, there's a whole...
Yes, but the impact fees are really under my purview. There are other categories that are already codified in the code relative to exemptions in the impact fees, and they're mostly nonprofits, for example, and kind of health-related. Hospitals, for example, are exempt from impact fees, other uses like nursing homes. So I think that during the writing of the code, in terms of these exemptions, I think the authors were really kind of looking at what kind of services are being provided by these facilities. And so in keeping with that, I think it's appropriate to include the volunteer fire stations. Now, I don't know that that cost necessarily is going to be a burden onto any other kind of use. These are really, impact fees are really very specific to the type of activity that's occurring on a project-by-project basis.
It's not, it's not going to make somebody else's impact fees higher because...
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and then Mr. Grasso, sorry.
It definitely shifts in the utility fund. If we don't capture the capital facility connection charges from volunteer fire companies or anyone else who's exempt, it's definitely shifting the costs of our infrastructure to everyone else who hooks up. And I would think that there's also a link on impact fees. If we have to provide expanded roads because of a particular use, if they don't pay impact fees and we still have to provide the expanded roads, that cost is in fact getting shifted.
Mr. Grasso?
Back to Mr. Trumpauer, what you were talking about, it does open a floodgate, because I have one of the VFW halls call me in my district wanting to know why they have to pay capital connection charges for hooking up, when churches get it for free and all these other 501(c)(3)'s coming to play. So yes, it is opening up a floodgate because it's monkey see, monkey do. I don't know how to get around it, because all these organizations are doing great things for the people, and you know, and it's kind of, that's the direction that it's moving in right now, particularly when you have a VFW hall that's servicing the military. I've got a bill coming down that allows capital connection charges for organizations that service the military. Mr. Southern is completely right, it is putting more burden on everybody else. It's similar to the Stormwater Restoration Fund, you know, before you know, we started exempting churches, and we started exempting Boy Scouts or organizations, and of course, that burden gets shifted on to everybody else that is paying. I just don't quite know how to get around it at this point. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Any additional questions? Ms. Southern?
If I could ask a clarifying question. I know if someone owns a piece of property and there's a change in use, it can affect future impact fees.
That's correct.
Is that also the case with capital facility connection fees, Chris? What happens if they sell this property?
I think it's at the time of connection, so it's when they connect, and whatever the use is at that time and that they paid for. Now, if it changes ownership...
Right.
...and they put in a new use, then, and they have to get a permit for a new use, then it would go through a recalculation of EDUs. Is it...
But suppose they put in for, suppose they sell it, they put in for a new use, I don't know what it would be, an office building, and in fact, it's less EDUs, but they still paid for no EDUs, right? So do they end up having to pay? In other words, the fire company connects, let's just say for the sake of argument...
In the case of this specific property they want, well, because the water right only conveys, it won't convey, it only exists as MDE has requested it only to Woodland Beach.
Right, but if Odenton does, or I think, I think Cape St. Clair might be looking for future stuff. Okay, so the capital facility connection fees are lost forever?
I would think so, unless the new owner changes use that requires a permit for us to recalculate the EDUs to see if they've gone up.
If they've increased.
And then we reassess them there.
Okay, thank you.
But that, but it would, if they offered to change it, or if they wanted to change it from a firehouse to an office building, that would be a change of use, correct? I mean, they'd have to then apply, and then you could recalculate.
But if the EDUs didn't go up, if there was, if the new use didn't have more EDUs than the existing use, you wouldn't pay.
They're paying for the net growth.
Only the net increase.
Got it. Got it.
Fair enough. Any additional questions from the council? All right, seeing none, thank you all very much. This time, we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 2015. I have no one signed up to speak on 2015, but if you'd like to, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 2015 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2315.
Anordnance Concerning Zoning Assisted Living Facilities, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities and Group Homes.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, I think you're on here with the county executive. Do you have any comments before they get started?
No, we had some discussion in our last workshop, work session about this bill. This is really clearing up the code and kind of defining community-based facilities, and again, Department of Aging has wrote a letter of support. This certainly makes sense, I think, in terms of trying to fix something, so I'll just keep in at that. Thank you.
Mr. Marzick?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, county executive's office. This bill amends the definitions of assisted living facility and group home by adding community-based living facilities as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts. This will allow the county code to mirror the State Health General Article in defining assisted living facilities, and this definition will allow for qualified individuals within these currently unlicensed assisted living facilities to qualify for need-based subsidies. Here from Department of Aging is Pam Jordan and Susan Gelton, as well as Larry Tom from the Office of Planing and Zoning, and Dr. Chan from the Health Department, and Lori Blair from the Office of Law.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Seeing none, I just wanted to say briefly that, Ms. Jordan, I appreciate your time and staff's time. For the rest of the council, I took a tour of two of these facilities, one in my district and one in Mr. Trumpauer's district, and it was very eye-opening and enlightening. I'm glad I got to see it, because I was having trouble wrapping my brain around all these I'm glad I got to see it because I was having trouble wrapping my brain around all these discussions about group homes, this, that, and the other thing. It was kind of confusing. So, it kind of helped sort of settle in my mind what we're doing and the changes that we're being asked to make and I think the necessity behind those. So, thank you for your time, Ms. Jordan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we offer that to anybody on the council at any time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
I was just going to say, for the last month, I've been running with the staff to let them know to co-sponsor this, and so I said, "The next meeting, I'll definitely put it on the record." So, I'll go ahead and say that for the record for Beth, so she remember, so I remember this time, to go ahead and co-sponsor this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I'll do the same, Madam Secretary. Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you all very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 2315. Anyone wishing to speak on 2315? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 2315 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1415 as amended.
An ordinance concerning zoning state licensed medical clinics.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, we could please have Ms. Duden come up here and clarify some remarks from the public testimony.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Nancy Duden. I'm the county attorney. Two points. First, Mr. De Souza, and I apologize if my willingness to listen to him on the phone today led him to believe that I was agreeing with him. As you will all probably get sick of hearing me say, I do not agree or disagree, support or oppose any bill. I just answer legal questions. And so, on the legal point, that's my second point, I wanted to clarify that I don't want anybody on this council making their vote tonight based on a misunderstanding of the case that Mr. De Souza quoted. Mr. De Souza was correct as to the finding in the lower court, but as you know, legal cases have many levels of appeal, and the decision in favor of the methadone clinic was actually overturned by the Federal Court of Appeals in 2008. Mr. Swain can give you the details on that, but in fact, there was no finding against Baltimore County with respect to their methadone clinic legislation, and I don't want the vote tonight to be based on a misunderstanding of that case.
And if I can just add, the case he's referring to is the helping hand case. It's been going on in Baltimore County, well, it was going on for about 12 years. It's now been eventually dismissed. The Baltimore County ordinance was a little different because it did make medical clinics a special exception use where the bill we're talking about is a conditional use. So, there were a lot, there were differences in the actual ordinance, and as Ms. Duden says, the finding that Mr. De Souza referred to was overturned by the Court of Appeals, which sent the case back for the proceedings, and the case was eventually dismissed.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? Counsel, seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on Bill 1415? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 1415 as amended.
Mr. Trumpauer?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grassel?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill 1415 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2015.
An ordinance concerning volunteer fire companies' charges and fees.
Thank you. Any additional discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2015.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grassel?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 2015 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2114.
An ordinance concerning zoning self-service storage facilities.
Thank you. Actually, I said 2014. I'm sorry, it was 2115. I apologize.
I have an amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number One.
This amendment removes self-service storage facilities as a special exception use in a C-2 zoning district from the bill.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
If I might, while the panel is making its way up, those of us who went through comprehensive rezoning during the last term, remember a lot of discussion about the perceptions of different zoning, what you could and couldn't do. And for my part, I always, I always considered C-2 as the quote-unquote "safe" zoning. This was the office building. This was what, you know, people could feel good that there wasn't an objectionable use going in there. And so, I strongly support opening up a W-1 to this self-storage zoning, and I don't really have a problem with C-3, but in light of my perceptions of what C-2 is or should be, you know, I'm offering this amendment to have that discussion. And this, as advertised, what this simply does is it takes C-2 out of the mix so that it would still be allowed as a special exception in C-3 and conditional in W-1, but C-2 would not be a possibility.
Thank you. Any comments from the administration?
Bernie Marsick from the County Executive's office. I'll defer to Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Larry Tom for the record. Mr. Trumpauer and I actually had a conversation about this amendment prior to its introduction, and I had some mixed feelings about this. I mean, you've often heard me preach about how, you know, we should have compatible uses to the main thrust of what the zoning district is. And in that context, I actually took a look at this to see if there were other uses that were compatible to self-storage in terms of its intensity and its relationship to commercial office buildings. And if you look at the code, there are some uses that I would like to proffer to you for consideration as being somewhat compatible in terms of its intensity of self-storage. For example, permitted in the C-1 district are sport facilities such as racket clubs and tennis clubs and any myriad number of athletic complexes, commercial, commercially based like Merritt, you know, there's gymnasiums like Merritt that would also be permitted in the C-1 district. And when we discussed this during the work session, my thought, I may not have expressed this adequately to you, but I can see a scenario where if I were an office tenant, I might actually want to utilize a self-storage facility to provide an opportunity for me to store archival material or things that I would not necessarily want to have or need to have accessible to my function on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, to address some of the concerns, I just wanted to proffer that for your consideration and for the council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Any additional questions or discussion?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, if the sponsor can sort of elaborate on, I guess, why striking it completely out of C-2?
Sure. And, you know, I should say, and Mr. Tom is right, I mean, we had a good conversation about this over email, and I take his points and I think he understands my intent. So, I'm not, I mean, this is one I don't feel super strongly about, but I do think, based on my experience with interpretations of the zoning code and what people's perceptions are, that if you have a C-2 complex, you know, near your community or in your community, you may be comfortable with that being used as office space or, you know, various other things. I'm not sure that self-storage facility provides that same, has that same level of acceptance, you know, in, you know, in a situation like that. So, I don't, I don't know if there's something driving this, if there's someone that wants to be able to do this in C-2, or if it came in to try and do W-1 and you took a look at it, Mr. Tom, and said, "Well, maybe it makes sense in these ones, too." I mean, like I said, that might be fine, but, you know, I just think that this was deserving of a conversation on where we wanted C-2 to go. And from my perspective, I view C-2 more conservatively. Others of you may not, and that's, that's fine, but I offered this amendment to have that discussion.
I'll weigh in on this as well because I co-sponsored. I actually didn't realize that Mr. Trumpauer had submitted the request for the amendment, and I also submitted it, unbeknownst that he was working on the same thing. I think you recall, I probably asked questions when we had the work session on this. And I'll just give you an example. Like in my district, when we did go through the comp zoning process, I've got a parcel, it was a C-2 zone parcel on Route 3, but does back up fairly closely to some residential houses in the community. Most of the C-2 that's there in that shopping, it's like a shopping center. So, it's more than just a one-level like strip shopping center. It's actually an office building, so you've got like, you know, Bocelli's downstairs and Pizza Joint and the Five Guys and some other things like that, Barber, stuff like that. I don't see, if that's a piece of property that's located near my community, I wouldn't want a three- or four-story self-storage building located there. That's just me personally. Keeping in mind that it's not just what's stored inside the building, but in a lot of cases, you've got RVs, trailers, boats, all kinds of other things that are stored in and around the property as well. So, I don't, I just didn't see the fit for it in my situation either. And it came just, you know, as we were thinking back through the C-2, C-3, C-4 thing, that just sort of didn't ring a bell with me that it made sense. So, that's why I was supportive of it.
But doesn't the special exception allow it to go through a process whereby if it doesn't fit right, it could be eliminated?
You'd have, I mean, yeah, I guess you could if people, enough people stood up and objected to it.
Mr. Smith?
And Mr. Chairman?
Just to clarify as well, the outside storage is not permitted under the special exception under the bill.
And also, in C-2, doesn't it have to be a regular building with one entrance? You go into the entrance. It's not, this public storage is not the public storage we're thinking of, but there's all those garage doors on the outside of C-2.
That's correct.
You've got to go into one central door.
That's right.
So, it looks like a regular building on the outside.
Right.
You go inside, and then there's your different garage doors.
That's right.
That's not the way I understood it.
There is some protection for C-2 in this bill. There's got to be, it's right here on Title 11, Section 5.
So, no external exits is referring to no outside roll-up doors?
Yes.
So, there's only one entrance?
That's correct.
Good point, Mr. Fink.
There's, there's one down there, I believe it's in your district, Mr. Walker, right before the 7th South River Bridge.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fink. If I may also just further speak about the conditions relative to special exceptions. If you look at 1811-151 in the bill, that's page 3, number 5, it says, "In a C-2 district, the self-storage facility shall be within an enclosed controlled central structure with no external exit." That's the exact provision that Mr. Fink was referring to. So, we're looking at, we're not looking at the old types of individual garages where you pull up and unload your...
But there is one like that on Route 3 that's got individual garage, it's a three-story, it looks like an office building from the road, but then there's actually a major roll-up door that people can go in through. But then there's a ton of little roll-up doors all along the sides.
But number 5 was specifically written so that we would prohibit those kinds of facilities.
So, this is like the one right, I believe it's right before the South River Bridge.
Right.
It's a big building, looks beautiful. If it didn't have the name of the location, the name of the company on the building, you would have no idea it's self-storage.
Right.
Oh, okay. Got it. All right. Any additional discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Grassel?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number One is defeated.
All right. Madam Secretary, please, I'm sorry, that's, may have...
Civil vote.
Sorry, yeah, that's exactly right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of, well, actually, call the roll, I guess, on Amendment, I'm sorry, on Bill 2115.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grassel?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 2115 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill, sorry, 2315.
An ordinance concerning zoning assisted living facilities, community-based assisted living facilities, and group homes.
Thank you. We have one amendment, Amendment Number One. Please read the title of that.
This amendment modifies the parking requirements for group homes.
Thank you. Mr. Fink, motion to adopt?
Motion. I'm going to move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is a parking amendment that we're all familiar with. We originally placed it into the methadone clinic bill, and then we took it out, and I'm submitting the same amendment, same language for this bill, which will require one space for every employee per major shift, and then one space for every four residents of a group home.
Thank you. Any comments or actually questions from the council or comments from the administration? Mr. Trump, okay, Mr. Marsick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick from the County Executive's office. We supported this amendment when it was added on the last bill, and we support this as an amendment to 2315.
Thank you. Mr. Trumpauer? Okay. Any additional questions? Mr. Tom, I just have one. If, if we're in a residential neighborhood and theoretically it's on a public street, how do we require them to have a certain number of parking spaces on their property if there's plenty of parking theoretically, speaking, on the street? I mean, it's a public street, so how would we, how is that, I guess, how do you figure that in your mind? Is it just based on the requirements that he's outlining in this amendment, and it's just they have to comply with that regardless of the parking provisions on the street?
That's correct. It would be typical of any type of use where we require onsite parking.
Got it. Okay. Any additional questions or discussion from the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Trumpauer? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grassel?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is passed.
Thank you. And Bill 2315 will be heard, as amended, will be heard on May 18th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2515.
An ordinance concerning watershed protection and restoration program stormwater remediation fee.
Thank you. Any, this is my bill, but I don't know if there's any additional discussion necessary, but I think we've talked this one enough. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say something. Mr. Reagan, you're 100%. I'm throwing my hands up and can't figure out why we're having the same discussion over and over again, okay? And what the truth is, sir, it's politics. It's all it is, okay? It's just a matter of someone turning around and be able to hopefully win a little battle to give the taxpayers back $1, and that's their big hurrah. That's really what it is. And every time we put bills out like this, folks, it costs money to advertise. You would think after two times of the taxpayers spending money to advertise, there wouldn't You would think after two times of the taxpayers spending money to advertise, there wouldn't be a third attempt to waste the taxpayers' money. Mr. Snowden, on your comment about, to the council people that have to run for reelection, okay, let me make a comment here. During my election, okay, I voted for the Stormwater Restoration Fund, because it's not about parties. What it's about is about people. This should be something that both parties should embrace, and it's a clean environment for our people to live in. In fact, just so folks understand how politics play in this little game, I am a Republican, as some folks may know, okay? And during my campaign, this bill came down to play from the federal government, which was Democratic-controlled, went through a state government, which is Democratic-controlled, and then the next thing you know, I, as a Republican, support this, and then, not picking all my Democrat friends, because they're my friends, but the other party sent out mailers to the Republicans telling them that Grassley supported this. This is Democrats sending mailers to Republicans telling them that I supported a bill to protect the people. So it just goes to show you how politics work. Now, the interesting part about it is, is that many of my people, excuse me, don't live on the water. They live inland. And I won by more votes this time than I won by last time. And everybody knows I supported the bill. So the issue is, is I really don't tend necessarily to agree with people that are in the water, that are not close to the water, don't tend to want to support this because they're not near the water, because there are a lot of people that don't live near the water that